Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting on August the 27th, 2018. Big exciting day for ABSs. I see the staff is still living and breathing over there. So, we know it was a big day opening our traditional schools. So, we welcome all of our teachers and our students back and we are excited about a great year. At this time, I'd like to take just a moment to recognize Bob Burd, one of our county commissioners. And I see there's Ms. Galey. There she is, the Chair of the Board of Commission. So, thank you for being here this evening. And Erica Johnson with ABAE is here this evening as well. And I think that's it. Great. Just a quick reminder that this meeting can be seen on Spectrum, Channel 5 and 10, every Wednesday at 7:00 and every Saturday at 10:00 a.m. Should you desire to revisit this meeting, you may do so on those dates and times.
Madam Chair, as a point of information, a couple of people in the audience asked how to retrieve the agenda that will go through tonight. So, if you go onto the homepage, I'll do this quickly, if you're following along. Go to the homepage, click on the Board of Education tab. And then on the top left, you'll see About Us, Meetings and Planning. If you click the Meetings tab there, you'll see a chronological list of our meetings. You'll see August 27th, 2018, August Board Meeting. You click that and the agenda will pop up.
And it is usually posted at least Thursday before our Monday night meetings, if not before. Great. At this time, we are going to have a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Mr. Rose. So, let's take a moment.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we welcome Dr. Benson, I believe, to his real official first night meeting. And we're excited to have him onboard in our Alamance Burlington community. So, welcome. At this time, the Board should have had an opportunity to look over the agenda. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Second.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Mark. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. We also have minutes for approval as presented. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Patsy. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And this evening, we have two items on consent. And both of those are our SRO MOUs with the City of Graham and Alamance County Sheriff's Department. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Madam Chair, before we do that, did we get an answer? There was a question about the dollar amount with the Sheriff's Department. Did we get an answer in regards to how we arrived at that? And is it based upon the number of SROs we have times their salary? Or how exactly did we come up with the dollar amount in the contract?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
Chair Gant, Board members, Dr. Benson. At the request of the Board, we went back and looked at the salaries for the SROs, not only for Alamance County Sheriff's Department, but for the other municipalities. The money that Alamance Burlington spends on the SROs supplements the total salary that's paid to the SRO. And the amounts that we pay is figured according to how many schools each different municipality services.
Okay. Is it a certain percentage? Like, do we pay 40% of their salary or 30%? How do we know how to put budget for this in the future? Is it a sliding scales where it would change from year to year? Or how has it arrived that, I guess, you know?
In the past, it was fairly consistent. We have been communicated with and different groups were wanting an increase. And we'll try to see if we can budget for that in coming years.
Okay. Well, it's just, I ask those questions, number one, to better understand it. But number two, you know, we still are in need of SROs in our elementary and other schools, middle schools, on a full-time basis. So, I was just curious. I just don't recall seeing the dollar amount in the past. But I see a nod from Finance Officer that it's about consistent to what it has been.
It's been constant for the past several years. And then we did receive the request from some municipalities for a slight increase. But we opted not to do that to allow time for better planning. Because they have seen an increase in what they are paying their officers without an increase from us. So, we've just asked that we have more time to prepare for that.
Okay. And Mr. Alexander, I don't remember the other question. Was there another question related to that contract? Do you recall?
Adam Mitchell and I, we went through the MOUs. Adam, did you want to speak to that? We changed a few of the clauses and added some verbiage to the MOUs.
I wouldn't consider them to be substantively material changes. Just making sure that they had the provisions and the type of language that we needed. But not any fundamental changes.
Oh, I recall. The other discussion, we had to do with a discussion that came out about surges and seizures. And you said that it was in the original MOU. Were you able to get that for us so that we could see that?
I certainly can. I have that.
You have that?
Yeah. I think Mr. Alexander does as well.
If we could get that, I would appreciate it. Because I want to make sure that we're consistent in that as we are in with the no conflict with the student code of conduct. So, if we could get that and take a look at it at the next session, I would appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm fine. Thank you.
Can I just ask him? It's quick, I swear. Mr. Alexander, okay, high school's full-time, middle school's full-time.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Elementary, how does that work? Are they half and half with another school? Or how does that work?
Elementary is paid at $25 or $30 per hour. The regular patrol officers, on their days off, they work the elementary schools. They'll sign up for it as extra duty.
But they're not Monday through Friday?
No, ma'am.
And not in every school? Or they are in every school? At the elementary level, my understanding is they're not at every school, to follow up on your...
Correct.
So, there's some that don't have an SRO at all? Or they're just part-time or so many, so much time?
Each school should have part-time SROs that sign up. And then they're paid out of that fund.
Would that be like two days a week, two and a half days a week, three?
Depending on their off-duty schedule.
And it's their, like Sheriff would have Sheriff, Burlington PD would have, that kind of thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it always the same SRO?
No, sir.
It's not. So, they don't really have a way to build a relationship with the kids and stuff?
Correct.
You know what I'm after. I don't want you to take the time to get a schedule of that. But if you can give me some idea about how, like how many days or... Just pick a couple of elementaries and give me an idea when you get time, not now, to let me know how much that person's there. Like, are they there 8 to 12 on Wednesdays? Because that incident's not going to happen when he's there. You know what I'm saying? It's like, it's like they're not going to rob your house when you're home, sitting around waiting on them, so to speak. You know I'm going. Okay, I'll just, I'll stop by and see you.
Ms. Thompson, if I could add...
Help me.
So, I mean, this is an area that we would like to see some increased coverage. But there are budget implications that go along with this. So, right now, it's on an hourly basis. And it really isn't as needed, is what I understand. Not necessarily a set schedule for the elementary schools. Is that correct, Mr. Alexander?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, you know, as we look at this moving forward, I think we need to figure out a way and find a way to support it financially to improve that coverage at the elementary level. And I think that it is critical that we, you know, begin to build relationships with our young people, including students that are at the elementary, at the elementary level. These contracts or memos of understanding have not been reviewed from a financial perspective in some number of years, is my, is my understanding.
From what perspective?
From a financial perspective, the compensation amount.
That's, that wouldn't be me, but it's probably...
So, we're going to need to take a look at these for all of our law enforcement agencies going into the next budget process. And that's what we asked our Burlington Police, the Sheriff's Office, to give us an opportunity to look at what that needs to be so that we can budget ahead of time and incorporate it into our budget for the next fiscal year. And then make sure that we're treating everybody in a comparable manner that's providing that support for us.
Well, I'm just kind of concerned for the rural, like way out Sylvan, way out Pleasant Grove. The time to get there, if nobody's there, is huge. And, okay.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consenting items.
Second.
Okay. So, thank you, Steve. Thank you, Tony. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Alexander, for stepping up.
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, we will move to public comments. I just want to remind those, I have three individuals who've signed up to speak tonight. Just quickly to review the process. This is an opportunity for you to share some thoughts with the Board. And the Board typically does not respond at the time of your presentation. We do allow a three-minute comment opportunity. There will be a timer on the Board and you will hear a bell go off when your time is complete. So, we ask that you be concise in your comments so that you can get in what you need to get in. And please remember that job performance at a specific school or of a specific school employee is confidential personnel matters. And we ask that you take that up directly with our superintendent. The podium, as you can see, is in a new location this evening. So, that's where we'll invite you to come and to speak. So, at this time, I'm going to invite Mr. Jerry Pardue to the podium. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm from Graham. And the reason I'm here tonight is because there's some citizens in Graham who's getting pretty concerned about the Graham Middle School. We don't know what it looks like inside because it's some of the older people like myself, which don't go into the schools. But the outside is getting terrible. Maintenance is bad on it. It is in a section of Graham, I hope you know where it is. But it's a nice housing development all around it. And it's getting to be eyesore in the community. If you look up here on the Board, we've got some pictures up there. This is the back part of the school facing Johnson Heights. These buildings, I'm sorry, not clear than that. But these temporary buildings, I've got the wooden walks. And here sits a dumpster right beside the school. And these kids going to be in there looking out and wonder at the dumpster and stuff like that. We can do better than this. And if you go to the next slide. And this is on the other side of the school. This is just one slide there. But does that look like a school to you? Or does it look like something that's from a foreign country that we're doing mission work in? Go to the next slide there. This is even a better picture of that. Now, why can't we do better than that as far as fixing up these buildings on outside the school? We have kids going in there. Another thing, the reason I'm saying this too, Graham is trying to better theirselves downtown. And they're going to have a welcome center downtown. And you have real estate people that's going to be coming in and looking around the school. And would you want to live in a house beside of this? I mean, I'm very concerned. And I sent Dr. Benson a welcome note. And he says that he's concerned also. But he's talking about a capital improvement program. And we're talking about capital improvement. Take last, it might take four years to do. Is that right, normally? So, can't we do something to get this looking better? I've toured around Southern. They've got a building like this too. But they've got handrails, it's metal. Kids could fall and hurt theirself with this situation. I just think we can do better than this. And if it takes four, five, 10 years, I might not see. But I wish, I wish you would consider it. And I even spoke with Amy a little bit through email. And I'm concerned about if people knows about all this and how the school's been taken care of, it might affect your bond issue. How are you going to have a bond issue when you can't maintain what the bond issue is going to be for? So, I appreciate any consideration you could give me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pardue. We appreciate it. Mr. Coleman, Dean Coleman?
Thank you very much. I was here before, as y'all remember. I think a couple of Board members, Ms. Simpson and Mr. Rose was not here. At that time, I was given six minutes because I was such a big talker and he wasn't many people here. And I appreciate that. I'm here again just to say that I'm still working on this Western Middle School girls, high school girls softball field. It's been a lot of hard work. We've raised a few more dollars here and there. And I do have a drawing to present to this gentleman over here who has been working with me very close, Todd Thorpe, Dr. Todd Thorpe. And I appreciate, appreciate that. So, I'm just informing you that I'm still working on this. I have a few notes here. Let me make sure. I'll get all the time I can. Oh, yeah. We got this site plan, but I think I said that, that I'm going to present to Todd. And I already talked to him about it. And this was done by an engineering firm out of Davenport, Virginia, Mr. Mark Johnson, for no cost to this county, not one cent. So, he did it in his heart. This guy is a member of the Alamance, Alamance AO Civilian Club, excuse me. He lives in Alamance County. So, he's been doing a good job on this. So, I just want to let you know what I'm doing. And I'm a little bit shaky tonight because my wife just fell yesterday and broke her hip. And so, I'm a little bit upset about that. So, if y'all excuse me, I'm a little bit shaky.
We appreciate you coming out tonight.
Coffee has only a few minutes left. I didn't know that you had to sign up to speak. I'd like to know if I can speak.
Sure.
After the last person, please.
Sure.
Sure.
She needs to get a form.
There should be a form in the hallway. If you'll get that and fill it out and then just bring it forward, that would be great. Do you need to speak as well? Sorry. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coleman. You give it to me. Thank you. All right. Jeff Andrews?
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, Board members, Dr. Benson.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
I'm here in my capacity as President of the Board of Directors for Alamance Citizens for Education. I think you normally hear from our Executive Director, Stephanie Brockston. But I ask for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Mostly, we just at ACE, we want to take an opportunity to welcome Dr. Benson to ABSs and to the community. I think both Stephanie and I have had an opportunity to talk with him a little in the past. And we just want to make clear that ACE has partnered very well with the Board in the past. And we want to continue that partnership. And we want to do whatever we can to help make ABSs a world-class school system. So, we'll be here. We'll be coming to you with opportunities to partner. And we hope that you'll come to us with opportunities to partner. I would just like to say that our flagship program, the Classroom Closet that provides the supplies to teachers, that's up and running again. We have changed the format. Teachers used to come to our physical location. We're doing it all online now. Teachers can order online. We're hoping that will be more convenient. We will then deliver the supplies to the school at which those teachers are teaching. So, we will do everything we can to make clear to teachers that Classroom Closet is available. We hope that every opportunity that you have to let teachers know about that fact as well, that you will take that. And again, we are very anxious to work, continue to work with the school system and to be the best partner we can be. And we look forward to a successful school year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Erica Johnson?
Good evening. I am Erica Johnson. And I stand here representing Alamance Burlington Association of Educators tonight. I'd like to say welcome Dr. Benson and welcome back to the School Board members. Dr. Benson, it was great seeing you out at Grove Park this morning. And I'm sure the other sites and faculty and staff appreciate your presence at their sites today as well. We'd like to let you know that we truly appreciate you listening and addressing our concerns about the buildings and classrooms being ready and warm and welcoming on our big first day today as we transitioned as a system with the new cleaning service. We want to let you know that we are, we as an organization are working diligently in the community stressing how crucial and how important the school bond is for our student-staff in our county. It was great to hear that we are looking at the whole child. And as we move into the new school year, we'd like to ask the Board to consider that we implement restorative justice practices, racial equity training and workshops so that we, as a system, truly do address the whole child and every child. And we look forward to an amazing and promising year. Thank you.
Thank you. If you would like to come forward? You'll be, it's all right. Did you find one of these out there to go?
I haven't.
If you'd be kind enough to just let me have that for our records. Great. Thank you so much. And it's Laura McLawhorn? Yeah, great.
That's fine.
Sorry.
No, it's fine. Ms. McLawhorn's fine. I have, I'm the parent guardian to my granddaughter. And she, I, she fell through the cracks today, her first day at kindergarten. And emotionally, it has broken my heart. But I would like to know how to, where is the complaint department? Because I did go to the school system. And I kept asking, where do I file a complaint, at the school itself and then the school system? And it was just, well, you can talk to this person. That's not filing a complaint that I just kept being told over and over again that we would, we would talk to them. To me, that's not the answer. I want to know what happened. I want to know why it happened. And I deserve to know why.
I'm going to ask you to step in the hallway possibly with Dr. Boss or Emmett Alexander.
I spoke to Emmett today.
You did?
Yes. Manus?
Okay. Let's, Dr. Manus, sorry. Thank you. If you'll go with Dr. Manus and she can talk with you. Thank you for coming this evening. At this time, I have no other public comments. So, we'll close that portion of our meeting. And we will move into the Administrative and Human Resources. So, Mr. Alexander, I believe you have some gifts for us this evening. As well as driver's education contract extensions.
There was a request for an analysis of the driver's education contract. It was determined that it would be more costly for the school system to attempt to absorb the personnel costs internally as compared to what we currently pay the North Carolina driving school. We're saving upwards of $55,000 with the way that we're taking care of the driving school currently.
Are there any questions from Mr. Alexander regarding the driver's ed contract?
Is the cost the only thing that you analyze? I have a few other things.
Yeah, the charter schools and private school situation.
So, I'll get to that. A few different things. So, one, you need to go out for an RFP for next year. This is the last year that we can extend it. And so, we need to start the process starting next year. On, and so what we did was we created an addendum. Remember, we had an old contract from several years back. So, we added some provisions that were not found in that contract that need to be there. So, that's, that's what you have in front of you. On the charter and private school issue, this was interesting. So, driver's ed really is a state program that is funneled through the school systems. We have to allow essentially any child in Alamance County to participate in driver's ed, homeschool, private school, charter school. By statute, you are allowed to charge any student who participates in driver's ed $65 for the class. And your Board policy says that you will charge $65 for the class, which I think, I think you're not...
That's correct.
I don't think that you should or could only charge non-ABSs students because of the way that the funding and the program is designed. So, I view, so you have to allow non-ABSs students to take driver's ed. And I think your options are either charge all students $65, which is what your policy says, or not charge anyone.
But these students do come on our campus. They use our lights. They use our facilities. Why is it that we can't? Are you saying that in the amount that we reimburse, it takes that in consideration?
Yeah.
It does?
Yeah. I mean, it covers all, I mean, the statute says that you have to allow all children in the county to enroll in driver's ed. And that says you can charge, you can charge anyone who takes driver's ed $65.
And we can discriminate if they're in, if they're in ABSs. We could charge them nothing. And we could charge anyone else, not ABSs students. We could charge them a fee up to $65. Is that what you're saying?
I would not advise that. I think you either need to charge all, everyone who takes driver's ed or no one who takes driver's ed.
Okay. We use the term six, we use $65. Could it, could it be less than $65?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay.
We made that change, was it last year or year four?
$65 is the maximum.
In a couple of years.
I don't think, but I'm not sure there was conversations to actually put it in place, the fee changed that when we made the policy. Right. It's there. And I remember, because at the time, I had a child that was going to be taking driver's ed and never got charged to $65. So, I guess it's a matter of whether we really intended to charge up to $65 and if we should and what, you know, do we need to based on the cost analysis to take care of it?
That's not for me.
Yeah, I'm not. Yeah. I don't know. Maybe that's something we can put off and get an answer later.
And just to be clear, I don't think you need to decide that in order to approve this extension. This extension is our relationship with the provider. Our relationship and interface with the students is a separate topic.
I would be interested in knowing whether we needed to. I'm interested since we have to put an RFP out, if the actual cost... Because I've heard the driver, a couple of driver's ed teachers complain. When we're out of school, they don't get paid, you know, in some kind of conditions when with the weather and they're saying, we know better. We know how to drive, but you don't let us drive. On those days, I've gotten some phone calls, particularly from one at Graham. And about the compensation. If we haven't did an RFP in I don't know how many years, do, are we really paying them what they should be paying? Are we getting from the state what we need in order to cover all of these kids? I mean, Todd, you're sitting there shaky. Do you know something about that? Have we looked at the dollar amounts?
Dr. Murray and myself, we looked at it about two years ago quickly because some of those same concerns came up. And at that point, we established a new RFP needed to go out to clear it up. And this one was expiring. So, I'm pretty sure that was his plans, is to put an RFP out with a complete package to see what providers would come up.
Just a point here. And this is, this has nothing to do with the RFP. But staff members that are behind Mr. Alexander, if you're speaking, do you mind standing up? Because we overhear, we can't hear you all that well, at least I can't. And I think if you stand up, I believe I could hear you better.
There's just one more area. I think we need to take an entire look... I think we need to take an entire look at, um, even the process. I, I'm curious now as to, because I'm sure as soon as this hit the paper, we'll have the home schools and the private schools, and even more charter school students coming to us. So I think it's a great opportunity. We could go ahead and sign this, but we need to actually look to ensure that the amount of reimbursement from the state takes in consideration all of those children out there. I'm interested in how much per child they allocate to our school system, the cost of the RFP, the cost of having those students here on our campuses to take the classes, uh, and just the process. How do we, who goes first? Is it an ABSS student? Is it a charter school student? I just don't know anything about that, so come back with us. I know you've got a long list of things to do. It's not that it's an emergency. At least we got, at least eight months. And whose calendar does this go also? We won't be missing these RFPs anymore, uh, when we decide, okay, that we need to do one, that it doesn't get pushed in the back.
Okay. So what I think we're requesting is more detailed information, certainly not immediately because we have nine months, but we don't want to miss our RFP window, and we'd like a little more detail on that process, so that then the board can make a decision of whether or not they want to start charging, um, anything.
Mr. Alexander?
Moving forward down the road.
The, um, I, a couple of concerns. I mean, I had, two of my kids took driver's ed, and they took it when their, the driver's ed instructor was a teacher at Williams High School. Then my third child took driver's ed when it was kind of like, I don't know who she took it from actually, but it, it kind of came through the school system. But, you know, my first two kids, I mean, they had a, they knew who they were going to take driver's ed with. It was going to either be Coach Hodge or Coach Story, okay? And, and so they, and, and they, they had, I mean, they had a real teacher-student relationship there. What the, the, the people that, that teach from the North Carolina Driver School, is it, is it my understanding that they are not school system employees? I mean, they're not like teachers at, at each of the schools?
Some are.
Some are, some aren't.
Yes, sir.
So, um, do the, do the adminis, does the administrative staff at each high school have, have some input into the pedagogical skills and whatnot that these people are exhibiting, or do you?
That training is taken care of by the North Carolina Driving School.
So we're, we're just, we're just out of that? We're completely out of that loop? Okay? Um, and you said that there was like a fifty-five, fifty, fifty-six thousand dollar difference between what we could offer and what the driver, is that per high school or per school system?
That's per system. The salaries for six full-time employees to take over this workload, you're looking at two-hundred-and-ten-thousand. Supplement, FICA, retirement, health insurance, you're looking at a total of about three-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand. North Carolina Driving School contract costs, a little over two-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand.
Where does that two-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand come from? Does that come from the state?
Yes, sir.
All of it?
Yes.
Okay.
And actually, it's a little bit more than that, because the driver's education vehicles are also purchased out of this fund.
So does it cost us anything?
Not for driver's education, no ma'am.
So every student that goes to driver's education is free?
Covered by the state.
Do we know how many students we served last year in driver's education?
I can get you that number.
Not, not just ABSS students, but all Alamance County students?
It's broken down according to which students drove and which students took the, uh, actual coursework. So I, I can get you that.
We don't go in the red for this, right?
No ma'am.
Mr. Alexander, so help me understand, this contract just covers the classwork? It covers the classwork and the driving?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And it covers the vehicles, maintenance, the extra brake, all of that.
Who owns the vehicles? The, the North Carolina Driving School or ABSS?
ABSS.
Um, question here, and this goes back to what Tony said, and I think you said earlier that we've got two, driver's ed is two-part. I think it always has been classwork and work behind the wheel. Uh, do, are, are we charged per student for each of those tasks?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and there might be a difference, because I guess a student that went through the bookwork might not go on and take the driver work, because maybe they failed the class, or maybe they just didn't do the driving.
Correct.
One more thing. So we buy these cars. Is that out of, it's all one big money. Is that, does the state give us the money for the cars, like the buses?
Yeah.
So there's no, there's no, what about upkeep? Tires, gas, insurance?
From the, I'll stand up. All we do is, uh, when, in the past, Dr. Monroe, um, Mr. Alexander from, you know, the future, when they order a car, we do go to Raleigh to pick it up, or we send someone to pick it up, that's normally who's under state contract. We bring it back, we tag it, we do everything, and as far as what we have to do on our end, uh, all comes out of the, it's from the, um, driver's ed. And what happens is they use the car until either we replace it, or until there's no longer a need for it, and then we turn these cars back into state surplus. The only thing the state does allow us for these cars, like the car that I have that I drive occasionally, it's an old driver's ed car, and the state says as long as the system chooses to use them in the system, we can keep them, but if we sell them, it has to go back to the state, uh, surplus.
And they pay the insurance?
Yes, ma'am. Everything's paid for.
We can use them for, as long as the system business in this, within the system boundary, we can use them for any purposes?
As long, as, any purposes is defined by the law. As far as, and that's, I'm saying that kind of funny, but we can't transport children with them. Uh, like if I need, like mine, I use it to go from school to school a lot of times. Most time I drive my Jeep, just, just because, but, uh, all the assistant superintendents have one. Dr. Manus, executive director of, uh, secondary ed, there's about seven or eight that we use for people to go from school to school, to keep the school board from having to pay mileage all the time. Uh, you know, our fuel, when we buy fuel, it's tax-free, uh, so it's actually cheaper for us to do that, so we do that, try to save the system. And like I said, the state's fine with us, we've asked that question several times, they're perfectly okay with the system using them, because they're actually in our name. They're okay as long as we're using them for official business.
But the state pays the gas while the kids drive and learn how to drive?
While the driving school has them, or whomever's teaching the course, they're responsible for having contract for their own gas prices at that point. They don't come to our pumps and just fill up on a regular basis.
So back to my question about the contract only covering the classwork, so it sounds to me like what we're doing with the cars, we would be doing the same if we did this in-house. That, that part of it wouldn't change?
Correct.
So, insofar as the contract really primarily covering the classwork with this engagement?
Right, and their, and their requirements to maintain the cars, correct.
Right, so that our costs wouldn't be different about the cars and about the students driving? Our costs is different with salary of employees versus the cost of the contract?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. So, when you say it's fifty-five thousand dollars more, that's not out of local funds, that's just drawn down from the state, is that correct? If we were to hire these individuals?
If we were to hire the individuals, we would be responsible for all personnel costs.
Right.
Then we wouldn't have the monies that come in from the state allocated for that.
The surplus funds that we have, is this sufficient enough in the, from last year, as he's saying, if to take the same number of employees, say six, from high schools, the surplus that we had, would it be enough to take care of the fifty-five thousand dollars if that was in benefits and salary?
The hesitation that I have about that model is, um, the way, when I looked at the driver's ed figures for last year, our savings through that contracted service left us with enough dollars to pay for the liability insurance for those vehicles with the state dollars, and it left enough for us to cover, to be able to purchase a new vehicle at the end of the year. If we see an, if we see an uptick in what we're paying for the actual instruction, it's going to put us in a position where we would not be able to pay for these other things with the state dollars.
When you say other vehicles, you mean the ones that's been, um, used in the, for the staff at the?
No, just meaning being able to get new replacement vehicles. And so at the end of this year, finance staff had enough left in that allotment to buy a new Dodge Charger for the program. Um, and so if we, if we see an increase in the personnel costs, we're going to be handicapped in our ability to do that other stuff to support the program.
Where's the Dodge Charger?
Uh, it was sent to the North Carolina Driving School.
Has the brake, brake installed on it?
I think they were supposed to be working on it.
All these cars have the brake in the passenger side?
Not the vehicles that we have here at Central Office.
Because you took them out?
I'm not for sure.
The North Carolina Driving School recycles them, so when they pull it out of this vehicle, they just put it in the next new vehicle.
So the cars, the staff drive are the retired driver's ed cars, and you pull the, pull the brakes out and?
Correct. We're afraid someone like you may be riding with us and think it's fun to push the brake in. I'd say that, I'm sorry. We do remove them, they are removed, because they actually just recycle the pedal into the next vehicle. And the Dodge Charger, it has a V6 in it, and it's not a Hemi or, uh, patrolman package or anything.
So?
So I'm not opposed to the RFP concept, but again, I, I would just like to pitch out there, I would like more than a cost analysis on whether this should be in-house or not, and what I'm talking about is I'm talking about, um, customer service, the quality of teaching that goes to the students, the oversight that the board has over, over what's going on. Um, you know, I would suggest maybe surveying some of the students, and getting some input from the, um, drivers, the, um, the, the teachers and, and the, the ones driving, um, because I, I believe that with, very similar to our custodian situation, I believe that when there are employees, we're offering better service to our students.
So it's not a cost analysis, you're looking for a service analysis?
I'm looking for. I'd like to have it. Huh?
How we would benefit from, per se, having ABSS employees run the program?
I would just like to have an apples-apples comparison to all of these areas, so that we can compare and say, even though it costs us fifty-five thousand dollars more, what is our ROI on that insofar as the services we're giving to our students? Because I think we have, um, room to grow. Is that fair?
Yeah, or said another way, which I would fully agree, that the, the bottom line is, is always something to sharply look at, but isn't the only consideration when looked at other qualitative measurements that could be, that could build in an ROI that says, okay, despite perhaps a, a higher, um, um, actual cost, the benefit to the school system is greater.
And, and please understand, my comments are not in any way a reflection of the current driver's ed teachers. I think they're doing an excellent job. What I, what I'm, what I'm speaking to is, is I believe that if ABSS was their employer instead of the contractual companies that, that, that employ them, that the end product of that is a better product for our students. And that's not a knock on North Carolina Driving School, that's anybody that we contract with. So, um, I, I just would like all of that looked at. I've been asking for eight years for this to be looked at, and so I, I know you're new, and I know Jeremy's new, and so I, I, I appreciate, I'm just, I'm, I'm taking the opportunity that this is coming due now to say, I really would like this to be looked at, because it's my opinion that we would better serve our students and our community by having safer drivers with this change. And so I'm not sure fifty-five thousand dollars isn't money well spent in that space.
And I, I agree with Tony and Brian, is what they say, but I think too, I would like to see the financial analysis of it too, the way we're doing it now versus the way that Tony and Brian are suggesting.
How do you put a dollar amount on, um, I mean, I can just speak, last year when Dakota took driver's ed at Graham High, um, without calling his name, he's absolutely fantastic, um, and, uh, he's been there for years, and kids absolutely love him. Uh, how do you put a dollar amount on, um, basically, I'm trying to figure out, how do you put a dollar amount on what you're saying? Yeah, sometimes it's better, I agree with you, like driver tour, to have them in-house, but how do you do that? When in fact, I think Jeremy can just provide figures and say, well, this fifty-five dollars thousand, fifty-five thousand that was saved as a result of that went into these, so then it kind of leaves us to decide, is that what you're saying? Just provide that, and then we'll decide.
Yeah, um, but you, you mentioned earlier, Ms. Simpson, about the, um, the conundrum of when they can drive, if schools close, and those sorts of logistical things. I believe those decisions made in-house by Mr. Alexander, by Dr. Thorpe, and, um, that we can make those decisions locally rather than, um, offshoring those decisions to someone in another county, in another area of the state who is not here, and, and there's this, there's this go-between, and Mr. Alexander has to call somebody in Raleigh, has to call the driver's ed teacher, and I believe if we pull all in-house, we can make those decisions locally, and I'm, I'm not talking about changing those people, I'm talking about employing those people, so that we can help them serve our students better.
So it sounds like the board is asking for a lot of detail and some overarching, um, opportunities that we might be able to take advantage of. So we put that on your tablet plate, and we appreciate the work that you will do to bring that back to the board, and we're certainly not looking for it anytime in the next four to six weeks. I think we have time to do all of that, but I think we'll, if it's okay with the board, that's what we'll do. And at this time, we do have a contract extension to vote on, so is there a motion on the floor?
I'll make the motion to accept the driver's education.
Okay, wait a second. Okay, is there a second?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Now, any further discussion?
I just have a comment. Um, why is all this free? When I, a hundred years ago, I had a fee I had to pay to take driver's trainings. Is the whole entire state of North Carolina doing this out of the goodness of their heart? And it's just, they're paying all this money for all these young people to learn to drive? There's no five-dollar fee? There's nothing?
To my understanding, and Adam, you help me if I'm wrong.
Ballpark figure, do you know the, the line item, how much that is on the, the state budget?
I don't. I know that a lot of districts charge sixty-five dollars.
I just don't know what, I'm not going to be the devil's advocate in the many here, but I, I just don't understand how you can just do all this free.
Well, it was a state, the state decided it's a line item in the state budget.
They probably took it out of the lottery money.
Yeah. Again, they were talking about, um...
But you just said some schools, some schools charge.
Yeah.
We do, and you know, I can compare, you know, having been in two counties and seen two different programs, so, um, every, every county in North Carolina does get a specific allotment, and it's based on the number of ninth graders you have in the county. Uh, last year, it was around forty-two dollars per ninth grader that the state put into that formula. Um, this year, that resulted in a little over four-hundred thousand dollars for Alamance Burlington in order to, in order to manage that. Uh, some counties, you know, have a more, have a model that's more expensive, and so I know in Caswell, where I just left, we did have folks on staff who handled it. There were three or four teachers who managed the program, and we paid a stipend to someone to be sort of a director of that program, um, and the state dollars were not enough to maintain that, and, and the ninth graders had to pay a sixty-five-dollar fee for us to handle the rest locally. And so I'd imagine that, you know, the other hundred and fifteen LEAs floating out there all have their own model, and it just depends on what you do with those to maximize what the state has given you.
So you don't have to send any surplus back to the state?
If you don't use it all, they will, they'll take it back, um, and so, and they will, as you enter, at some point in the spring, they usually will...
We need to have a driver slash custodian position.
And so, in the spring, they send out a survey to let us estimate, do you feel like you're going to use all of your driver's ed money by the end of the year? If not, they'll pull it back and drop it into other counties that are running short. And so, um, in Alamance Burlington's case, we've been very savvy with our dollars, and we have done as much as we can to use everything we're given to, to manage the program.
So it's in the state budget, and, and if we didn't have the state budget line item, then we would be paying for it out of funds?
Yeah, correct.
Potentially locally?
Correct.
And that would, yeah.
But you could actually charge for it.
Right, and that's something we're gonna...
Is that a crime?
No, no. And I think that's part of the stuff we have down the road.
Oh, you charge for something. I, I don't get all this free stuff. There is nothing free. There is nothing free, nothing, nothing.
So, I have a first and a second on the floor. Are we ready to take the vote?
What am I voting?
You're voting on extending the driver's ed contract for this year, the contract that we have.
I just, I just wanted to tell Mr. Alexander, Mr. Teter, that I appreciate the work you've done on this and the work that you're going to do on this, and that I think you guys are doing excellent on this. My, my vote's not a reflection of you guys.
So, all those in favor of extending the driver's ed contract for the 2018-19 school year, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Nay.
So, that would be five to two. Thank you. All right, Mr. Alexander, now you have some gifts for us.
Yes, ma'am. We have a number of gifts. E.M. Yoder Elementary School has received a donation of $6,000 from E.M. Yoder PTA of Meven, North Carolina. The donation is earmarked to purchase technology items for E.M. Yoder's elementary school students. We also have Hallfields Middle School, they have received a donation of $2,000 from Walmart Corporate Giving of Bennettsville, Arkansas. The donation is earmarked for technology maintenance at Hallfields. Hallfields again has received a donation of $5,000 from Laboratory Corporation of America in Burlington, North Carolina. This donation is earmarked for the purchase of Chromebook computers for the exceptional children's classrooms at Hallfields Middle. Hallfields Middle School has received a donation of $2,000 from First Savings and Loan Association of Meven, North Carolina. The donation will be used to purchase technology at Hallfields Middle School. Next, we have Sylvan Elementary School. They've received a donation of $24,800 from Hammer Trust Board of Snow Camp, North Carolina. The donation is earmarked to purchase computers and software for Sylvan Elementary School. And the last gift that we need to speak on is Walter Williams High School has received a donation of $25,000 from Ms. Ellen Nichols of Elon. This donation is earmarked for the Williams Athletic Department. Todd Davis is the athletic director, and he is to use the funds for what is needed within the athletic department at Williams High School. These gifts total $64,800.
I just wondered, when you say technology, like at Hallfields or wherever, does that mean at their discretion, or is that Chromebooks?
At, at their discretion. When it was Chromebooks, it was specified.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to make a comment mainly for Dr. Benson's FYI, since he's new. First of all, I just want to say, I'm very appreciative of these organizations that are raising this money and donating this money for these purposes. But I just wanted to say that all of these donations for technology and software and technology maintenance, I've, I said my space, and I feel like that we should be providing, you know, operational budget, the needs for those things. And so, I'm glad we have these partners to give us these donations, but I'd really like for, as we move forward in the budget cycle, for us to really look at how we're using these technologies and, and what monies are we spending across the whole division and what that looks like. I know we just bought a lot of laptops for teachers across all schools last year, and I think that was, that was a good thing to do. I'm a little concerned about maybe some inequities that, that may come about when we rely on our PTAs and our community partners to buy these types of things that, you know, I feel like that if they're needed in the classroom, it should be an operational budget item. Just a comment.
Okay, at this time, if it's the pleasure of the board, we can take all these gifts in one vote? Is that okay? All those in, I say, I need a motion on the floor to accept the gifts that's presented?
Second.
Thank you, Tony, thank you, Mark. Any further discussion?
I just want to add to Tony that I don't want our schools, certain ones, to feel like they've got to carry our slack, because that's a, that's, that's a what we're supposed to be doing. And I, I'm the same way, I'm right there with you.
Now, I have one question. And Walter Williams, so the athletic department, was that gift, is any stipulations to it? Are we going to name a locker, a field house, or anything like that?
No, ma'am. Seems like Mr. Todd Davis would be able to use those funds for whatever is needed within the athletic department.
Fantastic. I'm sure we're going to send her a nice letter in the school board, that, that's a fantastic donation.
It's very generous.
Very generous.
All of them are.
Okay, so we have first and second on the floor. So, all those in favor of accepting the gifts, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great. Thank you, Mr. Alexander.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we're going to move on to our Imagine Learning contract. Dr. Boss?
Good evening, Chair Gant, members of the board, Dr. Benson. As you may know, I apologize. Our current process of allocating digital resources through our textbook slash digital resources funding from the state is to allocate a per pupil amount to the school, and they have defined autonomy over which resource to purchase. Over a year ago, we started taking a closer look at what resources were being purchased. And as, as you know, when you enter into an agreement over multiple years with a service provider, they typically provide you a lower price point. So, we started analyzing two major things. One, what is the, the resource that is being used the most? And then, what are the outcomes from that resource? And as detailed in this narrative, our five highest users, well, Imagine Learning was our highest used resource across the district, it has been. And in 2017-18, the five highest used classrooms experienced 11.28 plus 0.6 percentage point gains in proficiency. So, in an effort to try to capitalize on the best use of our funding and our resources, Mr. Teter and I have worked together to identify a resource that would allow us to enter into a three-year agreement without taxing local funding. In fact, the funding source is a Title IV grant that first came to us through ESSA in late winter. And now, we, those, those funds have been dropped down to us for use in the 18-19 school year. In fact, it's the same funding source that I'm proposing we fund identikit out of in order to ensure that we're not just throwing dollars at a resource and not managing well the fidelity of its implementation and really taking a close look at, is it really making a difference for our students? We're proposing that we identify seven elementary schools to access their suite of resources. They are listed on a document that was emailed to you and also attached to the agenda. Two middle schools, that three-year agreement is $13,000 a year. The, the middle school resources are less costly. The elementary school resources are just under $187,000 for seven schools for site licenses for all these materials, because they can access a wider range of resources. And then, at two high schools, a three-year agreement of $13,000. There will be other schools who will purchase these products, these resources. They've already expressed interest and will want to purchase them out of the digital resources. We are proposing that we attempt to access a, a better pricing for our district. I apologize, there's a glare and I'm in trouble. And so, this document details the savings per student on average, 88, just, just under $90. Now, this doesn't mean that the schools would be able to afford this if we weren't to enter a three-year agreement. The schools that aren't involved in the pilot would be able to purchase at a discounted price if we entered into this agreement.
And when you say a school is able to purchase, they have resources, they have a budget, I guess, that they could then allocate some of their dollars towards these types of programs if they chose?
They'll have the same funding sources that we typically, year by year, push out to the schools. But in addition to that, the Title IV block grant is, one of the activities that it supports is academic supports and digital resources fall under that category, as does technology, but there's only a certain percentage that we can use on items such as Chromebooks.
Dr. Boss, if I could just see if I can break it down? Because you're talking to an IRS agent and you're using all these terms, and I bet I'm not the only one up here sitting here that have no clue that's what you're talking about. So, I'm assuming these are supplemental educational materials that are used in the classroom for instruction? And I'm thinking I heard you say that based on looking at proficiency levels in the various schools, those with these items performed better than those that did not. And we're going to get a grant, and this grant is going to pay for these supplemental educational materials. Is that basically what you're saying to us? And it's going to be system-wide versus each individual school?
To start, to start with, it won't be system-wide, because we, we didn't want to bring you a half a million dollar contract to approve without being able to attest to, being able to scale it, quite frankly. Now, I would also clarify that the grant piece, it's not a grant that we apply for and receive, it is a federal, it's part of our federal dollars. Title IV, Title I, II, III and IV, IV is part of our consolidated application to the state. And in the narrative, I clarified that we would like to use part of these funds for academic supports.
I have a question. You picked seven schools. What was so great about these seven schools that you thought the kid that goes to this school will just be amazing? Tell me what it's going to do for this kid?
So, first of all, these resources are adaptive software resources, which means that if I'm a student using this resource, it is, it is finding me where I am at, at that time, at my learning level, and ensuring that I'm accessing an activity that targets my level, whether it be math, math, math fluency, conceptual math, or accessing academic language, components of literacy. So, it's very personalized.
Where's the teacher in all this?
The teacher, the, the teacher is ensuring that the right students are on the right, the resource at the right time. So, I may not need the product that's called Imagine Math Facts, because I have demonstrated that I have the foundational skills in math.
Smartboard? Is that what it's going to be on the smartboard, or their little bitty things they have at their own desk?
It would be personalized with their Chromebook or iPad or whatever device that, that the school has. And you wouldn't walk into a classroom and see every student in the room using Imagine Math Facts, for example. You also wouldn't be able to tell that a student is really working below second grade because they're trying to catch up, so it doesn't expose a student who's, who's behind and needs to catch up.
And that classroom has the technology instrument that they're going to need for this implementation?
Yes, or they will be able to access it within their building. So, the other factor that went into considering which schools we would pilot it is we, every year, Dennis Frye's office sends out a spreadsheet where they express interest in a digital resource, so that he can prepare for setting up all the things that need to happen for that. And these seven schools, elementary schools and middle and high, in fact, expressed interest in implementing more than one component of the Imagine Learning suite. So, so we have their interest. Then we reached out and got their commitment to engaging in the professional learning and them understanding that we're going to be monitoring their progress and supporting that, which by the way, one of the other benefits of having a district-wide, not yet, but supported software, is that across the district, our central services personnel can support one main digital resource instead of multiple ones across the district.
And is their professional development part of this 226-490?
It is. The professional learning, coaching and support amounts to just under $18,000. That will cross all three years, and it, it will be customized for the site. So, it will, if the need at one elementary school is that I need for them to work with third grade ELA teacher, third grade teachers on ELA, then we're going to access that personalized professional development.
So, is that 18 training that trainer for her or him to train the teachers? Or is everybody that's going to have part of that, they're going to be part of that training, personalized?
There are different components we can access. So, in fact, there's a piece built into the software itself where the student can ask a question to a certified teacher.
Where's she at?
I'm not sure. The company's based in Utah. They access people from across the state. And then, I would also add that a third factor we considered is, is to try to ensure zonal representation as best we could with keeping all those other factors in mind.
Okay, I've got several things I want to, I need some help with. First of all, we, we must have used this in a school or a couple of schools this past year?
In 2017-18, Imagine Learning resources were used in 18 schools in ABSS. Most of those schools were elementary schools.
Because this, this said that we made some gains, AOG proficiency ranging from 11.1 to 28.6 percentage points. Is that in performance or just in the scale scores?
Proficiency.
Okay. Now, obviously, it sounds like to me this is fairly closely aligned with the curriculum we're using.
So, it, it helps a student work on their literacy, academic language, even our English language learners, their skills, so that they can access the curriculum.
Okay, does this go back? If, if a kid doesn't reach proficiency in, in some area, does it, it doesn't, it doesn't automatically go on ahead? It's going, going to drop back and be sure that the student is proficient before letting them go on?
Yes, that is the adaptive component that makes a well, well-produced, a strong evidence-based digital resource.
And our teachers, our, our teachers will be trained or have been trained in using this.
Yes. Right now, it varies due to the school-based implementation. This will allow us to standardize it, but allow some flexibility for if a school needs more assistance with Math 1. So, for example, the high schools would be able to access Math 1, Math 2, and also ACT.
I've got one more question, Tony. Imagine Learning, are they sending any of their people in here to help with the training or as part of the cost?
At some point in the process, and we're handling that through the contractual agreement with them.
Okay.
The, the process for that.
Okay, you're up.
How does this differ from the Study Island we had a few years ago that was canceled?
It differs from Study Island because it's, Study Island is not an adaptive. If it has an adaptive component, it is not as robust as this, and it also lends itself, Study Island does, to, let me back up and rephrase that. This, this resource lends itself to ensuring that a teacher is using it more, using it in a very strategic fashion, instead of setting up six computers and putting students on Study Island to progress through software that we're really not sure made an impact. Study Island is usually revered more as a test prep resource.
And are you able to monitor the metrics for usage on this to make sure that we're getting what we're paying for out of it? I mean, the usage-wise?
Yes, built into the contract is our ability at the district level to be able to access what's going on across the sites. You know, not digging into what each student did, but looking at uses and, and usage and looking at quantile gains and lektile gains and being able to put support in there where there, there are some dips in usage. And of course, more important than usage is whether or not it's improving their outcomes, and we can look at benchmark assessments for that.
So, we're not approving the contract tonight, we're just approving the concept of. So we're not approving the contract tonight. We're just approving the concept of doing it?
So the contract, um, the negotiation around that didn't happen as quickly as I had hoped, unfortunately, largely due to the complexity of it. But as of about 5:00 PM today, I believe, um, Imagine Learning, uh, representatives agreed to the changes that Adam requested be made in the contract, um, and, uh-
I worked on revisions today and sent them on today. I guess here's the email here.
Adam sent us revisions today. We pushed them straight to, um, their representative, and they have sent- Mr. Teeter, would you like?
Uh, so at, um, at some point today, I did receive, uh, the email concerning, uh, what, um, how Mr. Mitchell would like to see revised. Um, so this is one of those contracts where what they send us is a very short thing, and, and it references the end-user license agreement.
Mm-hmm.
And so Adam, we were able to get a copy of that from Mr. Mitchell, and he looked it over and found some areas that he thought could be better and some areas where the language was a little too aggressive. Uh, and so we were able to pass his concerns on, uh, this afternoon to Imagine Learning, and they very quickly responded and were okay with all of his proposed changes. Uh, and they, they sent over a draft to us this afternoon shortly before this meeting started, uh, reflecting, uh, what Mr. Mitchell wanted to see changed. And so, and we do have copies of that, uh, in the event that anyone wanted to take one with you or, or look at over in your free reading time.
Thank you. You had mentioned eighteen schools had done something like this or had done this before?
Eighteen schools, and that's how we arrived at it being the most widely-used resource?
Okay. Are any of those eighteen, the seven?
Yes.
Yeah, can, can we circle on that? I mean, so everyone had, through, I guess, their own budgetary discretion, the ability to secure this resource. Eighteen did. Now, we'd make it di- district-wide, meaning every school would have the ability through their own budgeting process to have a discounted rate, correct me if I'm, whatever I'm wrong. But we're going to provide it at no cost through their own school-level budget, the, um, to seven schools. So who are, who, can you name those schools?
Yes, Alexander Wilson, Hillcrest, Paul River, North Graham, Newland, Garrett, and Grove Park are the seven elementary schools who've committed. At the middle school level, Tarrantine Middle and Broadview Middle. And at the high school level, Southern High and Graham High.
Great. I, the, this seems to me to fit dead square with goal one of our strategic plan. I certainly, uh, support it, and hearing that list reassures me that, um, perhaps, uh, we're, we're providing it, the resource, to those that are, uh, going to use it in, in, um, in the most equitable way. I do have a question about, um, what's next? Uh, because you say all five of the highest users of it, so five of the eighteen saw gains in their EOG proficiencies, uh, ranging. What did the others do? Meaning, who, how do you determine a, a high user versus a non-user? Is this a kind of resource where we could front-load all of that expense? And at the school level, um, schools could decide not to use it? Or what are the, what is the accountability built in to ensure that if we provide it, that schools will use it?
Right, so one of the reasons that the names of the schools weren't identified in the email I sent you Thursday was because I needed to have a, a conversation with each of the principal just to confirm their commitment, what they were signing on for. Um, so our support of their using it with fidelity, um, will be very important to us. And, um, like I said, we'll be able to see the usage, which, which, and the principal will as well, and we'll be watching that and supporting that.
Great, so we're not imposing it upon them? This is done in, um, in full partnership, and they're committing to, to using it?
It is, um, and I, back to one of the statements you made about, uh, schools that wanted to access it could heretofore. Many schools couldn't due to pricing. And, um, this will give them access to it where they otherwise couldn't afford it. In addition, the schools that you didn't hear me name will be able to get it at a, uh, I think a thirty-three percent, thirty-two percent to forty-four percent less if they do opt to use their digital, uh, resource funds for this. And we're also going to, um, try to access federal funds for that so that they don't have to do that. So that everybody kind of, kind of wins.
I'm just curious, the eleven that are not part of the seven that were part of the eighteen, did they not want to continue this or was it strictly a budget thing?
So we had four, four elementary schools who said, you know, I'm not interested in Imagine Resources at this time. And, um, those are just schools that are using something that's working for them. Um, the other schools just expressed interest in parts of it. So most, most of that is Imagine Math because it's been more frequently used. If they learn that, when they learn, if they learn, that they can access the other parts at a discounted rate and perhaps access federal funding, they may change their minds, but, um-
So they're not asking for a vote tonight because we still have a contract to review, but this was great information.
Is that true?
So it's a pleasure of the board if you would, if you would like to, um, um, for us to bring you the full contract that, uh, Mr. Mitchell has fully vetted for the board chair's signature and the finance officer and superintendent before we actually, um-
I don't mind voting on it tonight. I just need, I'm just need clarity on what we're voting for. If we're voting on the, just the approval to do it or the concept of doing it or spending the money for it, then, I mean, I, I'm okay voting on that tonight. If we're voting that we approve the contract, then that would be something that we would either need to wait on or we would need to motion contingent of at least Adam's review. I'm not usually comfortable approving a contract that I haven't seen.
Yeah.
So I just need clarity on exactly what is the vote entail?
Since this exceeds one hundred thousand dollars, you would be approving the contract. So if it's a pleasure of the board to wait until the September fourteen, maybe, board meeting, then-
Is, will that hamper any plans for using it in schools?
We'll have to. Hey, Dennis. We have a, a plan for that.
Well, if we're going to hold on the purchasing and the option of lowering the cost for some schools, they would be put in a position to possibly wait until the approval, so it wouldn't be in use. And they're having to make that decision in conjunction with choices that they're making with other software at the same time. So it probably would put on hold some decisions right now.
I just have a question. Okay, this is for three years, for these seven schools. And if these seven schools decide like the other eleven, hit or miss, it worked, it didn't, of course, this is kind of like a repeat for these seven, right? They're in, they're into it. Is this contract going to be, or we, we don't know what we're going to stay with, but is the next looking expense going to be even more to hook up with this particular brand or?
If we were to expand to all thirty, I guess, th- thirty-three, thirty-four sites that would be using it as a site license, then it would be. Um, and that's the purpose of bringing a, a smaller-scale proposal so that we are sure-
Brand decks could come in and walk in and have something that makes this look like nothing.
I wouldn't want it to use it until we knew that it would improve outcomes for our students.
Right, okay.
But I don't want to delay the process. I mean, I think what you're trying to do is save money overall versus having to do it at individual schools. And you've already said you've looked at it and determined it's the best resource, and I would hate to delay it for teachers to be able to start using it and implementing it. Um, you know, I don't have a problem approving it as long as Adam approved the contract, I mean, reviewed the contract.
But here's what I would add-
By you too, I'm fine.
I, I, I spent a good amount of time on it today, and I just saw their response. I see at least one thing that didn't match up, which I think was probably just an oversight because I had a lot. So I, I would like to compare what they sent back with what I sent them before. Now, I'm not saying that you can't approve it. I'm just saying that I would at least like for it to be contingent on any-
Your satisfaction with the contract. That's fine.
So how does the rest of board feel about that process?
I'd like to make a motion, we approve, um- You know, Brian, sorry to interrupt you. Dr. Benson, did you, were you going to say something?
I just want to make sure that there's, there's no change in any of the financial aspects in, in what they have, what we're going back and forth with.
I haven't been looking at the financial aspect at all.
The contract still says those dollar amounts.
Okay, okay, so contingent upon your final review of-
Non-monetary provisions or other-
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the Imagine Learning contract contingent upon, uh, no monetary changes as well as the, uh, the review and satisfaction of both the board attorney and the superintendent.
Second.
Okay, so thank you, Brian, thank you, Patsy. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like a, a final copy emailed to the board, please.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye, or anyone opposed?
No.
Thank you. So it's six one. Okay, and you have Identikit as well, Dr. Boss.
So this, this, uh, purchase does not exceed a hundred thousand. Um, however, um, it's a, a purchase that impacts all thirty-six sites, so we are seeking the approval of the board. Um, and, um, I think that the information provided at the board work session about the, the software and the equipment sufficed. Um, there were questions around the security, and this is the two-page document that I provided you to answer. Hopefully, your, uh, all the questions around data security, uh, with Identikit.
Thank you for getting that. I read it, and it answered my questions.
Thank you.
Great.
I have to give credit to Dennis.
Okay. So, um, we have, uh, a request for a vote on the Identikit kiosk and software purchase. So is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Is there any, are there, are there any further questions?
I've got a question. Uh, as far as the kids, uh, the kids getting their photo and getting, uh, and being a part of that, that's up to the parent, right? That's not, it's not something we're, that we're requiring everybody to do.
That's correct. Our district-wide standardized approach to using this will be for visitor management, and, and also they can use it for tardy and dis- dismissed.
Yeah, I got you.
Um, and also, it was made mention at the board work session that a process for, you know, what happens when there's a, an alert that, that comes? We, uh, Dr. Thorpe, uh, Dr. uh, Mr. Alexander and I are working on a process for that.
I, I'd like to make a couple of requests that, um, that this is used consistently across the school system and that it's not used fully at this school and not at this school and halfway at this school. I'd like to, I'd like to have, um, uniform processes so that a visitor at one school would have the same experience as a visitor at the next school and that we communicate to people about expectations. Um, we don't want people to show up and not have the identification they need to get in because they didn't know ahead of time.
For purposes of it being streamed and everything and it's recorded, if you weren't at the work session, can you just explain what this looks like, how this operates? Because we kind of know, but nobody else does. That'd be really interesting for the parents to hear this, to really sell and promote this.
So this, um, is both equipment and software and then materials that are, uh, used with it to, um, uh, to manage visitor entrance into the school as well as, uh, student, um, arrival. It'll print the, it'll print the slip to admit them to class. Then it will also talk to, um, their, um, most, um, robust software that will check the sex offender registry and alert the, um, the front office, which is obviously why there're, uh, a heightened need for a standardized approach.
And they have to type this in like they usually do, or do they have a card?
The, it scans a driver's license.
What if they don't have a driver's license?
Wow.
I mean, that's a big topic.
Yeah, it is. Okay, that needs to fall into our procedure.
They normally have at the front desk for those people, I mean, for those individuals who don't have one, uh, which is not going to go through, I don't think goes through any state-type of database, but they do look for ID, know who's on campus, the purpose of being there, and so forth and so on.
While it won't attend to that, it'll hi- it will heighten the level of, of security we'll, uh, be able to provide.
Well, since you're talking about security, uh, I know we've got those boxes out front of the school, and it's not like you see the whole body when you're standing there in front of that. Have we had any kind of, um, training update to really not get quite so easy to push the button? I'm here just to let me in because we get real comfortable, things like that? I've been to several schools and I push it and I walk right in. I'm just curious, is that something we're having those conversations?
So bringing, putting this new system in is going to give us an opportunity to take a step back and look at the procedures that are currently in place and any inconsistencies that we have across schools. So part of what we want to do is make sure that we're handling access to the school's visitor, access to the schools in a consistent manner, as, as Mr. Rose had, had asked us to, to do. That's what we were planning to do. So, um, we do believe that as we communicate this out, that it will bring a heightened sense of awareness of what we're doing on our part, and I'm hopeful that our, our parents and community members will feel like, uh, we're, we're taking a step in the right direction to improve, um, safety and access to our, to our schools. But, uh, the procedures that are around the buzz-in and checking in at the office and what we will do if you have or do not have an ID when you come in will, will be consistent across schools.
Okay, so we have a first and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Boss.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Thorpe, performance contracting.
Good evening, Chairman Gant, Board of Ed, Dr. Benson. We say we'd be back tonight to discuss with you quickly. Um, Asher's going to go through performance contracting one more time so we can entertain any additional questions that may have come up. And also, you received a copy of the resolution today that we're going to be asking you to really consider to, um, pass tonight as a board, so we can move on to the next phase of this project.
All right, thank you, Dr. Thorpe. Just pull up my presentation real quick from last time. So I am really here to answer any questions you have prior to passing the resolution. However, I would like to express our, our great, uh, interest in, and how much we are looking forward to working with Dr. Thorpe's team and improving the work, uh, learning environment in these schools with the lighting project, as well as the, uh, the new chillers and the water conservation. Does the board have any questions at this time for, for Brady?
When we originally started talking about this, I think it was the, uh, lighting as well as the windows. Well, is that not correct? And-
When we were, the first presentation was given, they assumed a much larger savings. So, uh, Mr. Gasper had expressed that we could possibly look at windows, we could look at chillers, we could look at boilers. Uh, there's a lot of other options we could look at. Uh, what happened was when they got in to do the study, the orange line is normally where folks are at. Excuse me, the green line is normally where folks are at.
So that, that's the national median for energy usage intensity, which is how much energy you use per square foot of your school. So that green line is the national average, the, the red line is your average EUI. Uh, in, in essence, you are already more efficient than most schools in the country. And that is because of Dr. Thorpe and his team and all the setbacks that they're doing to make the, uh, schools as efficient as possible already. Um, unfortunately, on our side, that means if you're not spending, uh, utilities, we can't save those utilities. So the, uh, project is, is limited to the lighting, water conservation, and the chillers that the lighting were, was able to afford through energy savings. So you, you are probably correct that we, we actually went through, uh, several options for windows for other equipment controls, stuff like that. But unfortunately, that did not fit into the financial project.
Why is maintenance is long? Explain to me what, why maintenance is so outrageous?
Um, that is just a different building type, and it doesn't really fit into the, the school types. Um, the average for a maintenance building is much higher. So you're not seeing the national median for a maintenance building on that list.
Why is that maintenance building? That's your office.
That's where a lot of it goes that we're running, uh, refaced power cells. We're running a lot of heavy equipment down there as far as our carpentry shop. Uh, we have a lot of security lighting there because we have a lot of equipment sitting there. There's a lot of issues that it would be more higher around the maintenance shop. Uh, our heating and cooling is not as efficient because we're using metal buildings. Our heating and cooling is not as efficient because we're using metal buildings. So there's a lot of reasons our, our power's a little higher down there.
That's got Jay's name on it.
It is still a lot lower than it could be, and that is still a very low EUI for a maintenance building like that. The administrative office is also one of the higher ones that is right here where you're sitting, and that is really because it runs as an office building year-round, not because it is inefficient or a high energy usage.
Your office.
It's my office. It's all my office.
It's all his office.
And just, just for the ears of our commissioners that are present, this project does not have overlap with our expected bond money usages. Is that correct?
No, this allows the bond funding to be spent on other higher priorities by the school system. This basically avoids spending the bond money on lighting and water conservation so that it can be spent on what you deem a higher priority.
Okay, thank you.
Did you get that any quicker? You had said December.
I'm sorry?
You said that would be like December. You couldn't speed that up?
So there's a, there is an approval process that we have to go through. This is one of the first steps in that process, then the resolution passed by the county commissioners. It will then be submitted to Dr. Thorpe and his team, the third party, as well as LGC for approval. So December is probably the earliest we'll get this signed.
And right now, we're on schedule to go to the commissioners on the Tuesday after Labor Day. Contingent, we approve the resolution tonight.
Is it part of the resolution to the commissioners that they will not decrease our funding at the current level that we receive?
Correct.
Help me out with, with our energy.
With your energy, with our energy piece, correct.
That is correct.
And just for the sake of the public that may not understand what we've talked about at the work session, from a layman's standpoint, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is a program that is going to use the savings for energy that is made to pay the debt services on the project. And the program is monitored and audited by a third-party state level, and that if the calculations are in error, and there is not revenue from the savings to pay for this, that you guys pay that difference instead of us.
Absolutely, yes. Just to step back, that is how performance contracting works. You're essentially using what you spend on utilities today to fund a loan from a bank to fund this project, to install all the lights, water conservation, and chillers. So yes, if there is an error or a lapse, lack in savings going forward through any of the 15 years that we are in this agreement, Payam is on the hook for that guarantee.
And you need a vote on the resolution this evening, is your, your request?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion to accept the resol, that we adopt the resolution authorizing the filing of an application for approval of a guaranteed energy saving contract authorized by the North Carolina General Statute.
I'll second exactly what he said.
Well, thank you, Pam. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Great. Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Why was Ray Street Academy kind of one of the higher ones? Just the building?
Okay.
Yeah, if you have any specific questions like that, I'd be happy to, to look into it in a little bit more detail. Just reach out to Dr. Thorpe.
Madam Chair, can I just take the opportunity to say thanks to Dr. Thorpe and his staff for the obvious work in keeping our costs down for energy? That, I mean, that's really remarkable to be that much lower than the national average. So that's, thank you. I hope our commissioners took note of that as well, that, that's good work, that's good work that you and your staff are doing, and it needs to be pointed out.
Particularly with the age of our buildings. So, great work. Thank you, Dr. Thorpe, thank you, team.
It's been a long journey to get to this point, but.
Absolutely, and I'm happy to be.
Thank you, everybody.
I just wonder, have you really seen some really bad buildings for schools?
I have seen, I have, you're not the worst. No, I have seen some, some equipment that does need to be replaced that we are unfortunately not able to affect at this point in time.
But I'll add to that just for our sake, is fortunately we get the study of all the equipment. So not only will we know what they've replaced, we know also how they've rated our other equipment. So we know where we need to start putting our thoughts and processes into to replace.
Like a maintenance plan.
Correct. That will help us develop a really good maintenance slash replacement plan for equipment.
That's awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your hard work. Mr. Teeter, you're up for benefit provider extension.
So this may be Chair Gant, board members, and Dr. Benson. This may be the least popular topic that we cover tonight. At the, at the board work session a couple of weeks ago, we had the opportunity to review the history of our benefits provider in Almanz Burlington Schools, and we talked about the timeline that we were up against with administrate, key administrative positions changing over in July. And so we received board direction to look at the last board-approved contract with Mark III, and so we had, that was approved in 2010. There was an extension in 2013 that did not receive board approval. And so I, I spent one night digging through the crypts and found the 2010 version, and we worked with Mr. Mitchell in order to convert that into a one-year extension so that language is the same as what you last approved as a body. Mark III is okay with this language, and they are, they are understanding that this is just for one year, and that we will be pursuing an RFP for benefits, or a benefits broker. And so I believe in the, in a board update a couple of weeks ago, I was able to share with you where we are in that timeline in order to get all of the input from stakeholders. And so you've got that timeline now that you can hold us accountable to, and so you can check with me in August, September, October, where are you? Have you done this item that you outlined in the, the timeline for the system on the RFP? And so with that, I can turn it over to any questions the board may have about this one-year extension.
Board members, anyone?
When you say they say, Mark III says that they're okay with that, we didn't have a contract. What difference does it make whether they're okay with it or not? But anyway, that's just a comment.
I understand. Yes, ma'am.
The other thing is you, at the last meeting, you provided a list of, which I love, a panel that's going to basically hear, I guess, from the different companies. But I think ABAE was left off. Could we add then?
So the teacher that I have solicited is a member, and so I'm just, and I'm waiting on responses from folks I've reached out to. I'm suspect to start a school stuff while I haven't heard back just yet, but I did intentionally reach out to a member of that organization to hopefully be the teacher representative.
Okay. Wow. So at this time, is there a motion on the floor to accept the extension of the contract with Mark III?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Is there any, are, is, I can't get my language out. Are there any additional comments or questions?
I'd like to just add that this be the year that we look at all kind of contracts for RFPs.
Thank you. I think that's a good idea.
I just wanted to say I appreciate Mr. Teeter and his tenacity on this, and for bringing this to RFP finally, and Dr. Benson's supporting that. So I'm, I'm glad this is, I'm glad this is moving the story, so.
That's right. All right, so there's a.
And I always want to add kind of what we just said, that, you know, we're, we're looking at some things now, like a RFP here for employee benefits, but we, we also approved an RFP for driver edu, talking about RFP for drivers' education. We're also perhaps need to look at ones for legal services, for.
I'm sorry, what services?
Those sort of things.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said. What kind of services?
Legal services.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Dr. Benson, listed all that at the last time at the work session. Auditors, all of them would.
All right, so we have a first and a second on the floor. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Thank you.
We know why.
Yes, we do. So that's a five to two. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll go into board and superintendent comments. Tony, I'll start at your end, and we'll move down the line.
Okay, yeah, I just have a couple of things. I just wanted to say thanks to Dr. Benson for his message on Friday to the teachers, and I think that was the best opening event that I've been to, and since I've been on the board. And it was very moving, and I really felt like everybody felt appreciated and empowered going into the new school year, and thought it was a great, great message. I appreciate the time you put together to do in that. It was, it was really good. And I also wanted to throw something back out at this board and with superintendent that I have asked for, for several years, for consideration. We have our ABAE representatives who come to all of our night meetings, but as we all know, much of our work is actually done at the work session. And, you know, I think it's good for them to be part of that. And of course, they're all teachers, and they're not able to without paying for a sub and that sort of thing. And so I know it's a budgetary item, but I would like for us to consider a way that we might, could allow some of the representatives to attend our work sessions. And I don't know exactly what that looks like. I don't know if we pay for the sub, or if they rotate that around, but I'd just like for Dr. Benson to kind of think about that and talk with the group about it, because I think they miss a lot of what we say and do, and their ability to give us input is, is hampered. So anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there and mention it, and try to get some leverage on that. It's never happened in the past, but I'd like for us to reconsider it, so.
Thank you, Tony. Steve?
Pam and I attended Legislative Committee today for North Carolina School Boards Association, and what I'm going to say is centered around that. We're, we're in the process of developing a legislative agenda for 2019, 2020. And this is going to be, first, first of all, the Tuesday after Labor Day, everyone should receive, all the board members should receive a survey. Now, the following week, we have district meeting in Davie County, and that's four o'clock to eight o'clock at Davie County, at the New Davie County High School. And I think it'd be good if as many of us as possibly can go to that meeting, because at that meeting, there's going to be a lot of explanations and questions and sessions about that legislative agenda for 1920.
What date is that, Steve?
That is on September 19th. I think that's a Wednesday. And I think we're the first ones this year. Usually, we're not quite this early. And I hope, I hope, Dr. Benson, that you or Ms. Chandler have received, or will receive some information on that, because usually the superintendent goes along with this trip, and.
That was sent a long time ago.
We go in that white van.
No, we're not. I'm not going if I have to go in that white van. So anyway, let, let me just kind of give you how the development of this, this agenda, or this legislative agenda is going to work. It'll be talked about at the district meetings, and then we can come back and fill out your surveys. I wouldn't fill them out until I got more information on it. Some, more information will be sent out to you electronically. There's the law, there's a law conference in Asheville. I don't know the date right off, but that's an opportunity. There'll be some webinars dealing with it, and you'll all get notified by North Carolina School Board Association on that. And then the conference delegate assembly, where, and we have four votes in that, that will be at the convention in mid-November in Greensboro.
Right after the election.
So that's, that's the process for this, for developing this. So Pam and I would both encourage all board members, when you get the survey, to, to get, get your information, look at it, and then answer those questions that come forth. We were, we were in the process of trying to vet the questions today to be sure that they're asked in, in, in a way that all board members across the state can understand what, what's being asked. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Steve. Brian?
Unfortunately, they left, but in the, the audience tonight, we had Principal Stephanie Hunt, Rob Drummond, Assistant Principal, and Freebird McKinney, our North Carolina Teacher of the Year from Walter Williams High School. And we, as a system, hit a pretty big milestone in the, the first year of implementation of the IB program at, at Williams. When you look at Goal Two of our strategic plan, one of the, the many shining examples of the progress that we've been able to make. So congratulations to them. I will follow up with a note to, to them and the others. I know there are many here in the room, as well as at Williams, that are making that a reality. But progress is, is hard. It's often not easily seen, but when you reach milestones like that, we should, we should recognize that. So kudos to, to all those involved in, in bringing that program. And hopefully, if we see the kind of demand that I think we all think is possible, we will see additional IB programs within our system. Also, just want to say, this morning, I gave a kiss on the cheek and, and to a beautiful little girl who started first grade at Elon Elementary School. That's my daughter. And my heart filled, not just for her, but the hope and the aspiration for every single student in our system. So I just want to say to Dr. Benson, to, to the staff, and to all of our families, just best wishes for a great school year. And it was a quiet day. I've been on, this will be my third, as a board member, and I was checking my email a lot today, and it was quiet, and no news is good news. And when you look at some of the bus issues that we have had, and we're going to have issues soon as I say that, yes, thank you for that. But, but a tremendous yeoman's job to Dr. Thorpe, the maintenance staff, as well as our bus drivers who are up early getting those buses ready. The fact that we didn't have emails going all day with issues is a, is a pretty darn good sign of a lot of hard work and a lot of planning over the last several months to get us ready. I know that we, we have positions still to fill in our schools. That should be the, the top of mind. I know that it is. But we are, we're off and running. Also, I want to echo Tony's sentiment of just the incredible program last week to kick off. And the, the connections really came through. When you think about Impact Almanz, Almanz Achieves, the Chamber of Commerce, and then the, the many community partners supporting our school system, you really feel that, not just in that program. And Dr. Benson, you did a, just absolutely inspiring, fantastic job addressing all of our staff and teachers last week. But your main point, one of the key things, was just the tremendous outpouring of support, underpinning all of our efforts, and that really came through. So just a very proud time to play a very small role in, in all that ABSS is doing.
Patsy?
Oh, okay. Mr. Purdue spoke in regards to Graham Middle School. I mean, excuse me, Mr. Coleman. Did I get it right? No, Mr. Purdue. And, and, I mean, he's absolutely right. I mean, that dumpster being right outside, I know it's at the back of the cafeteria, but it is directly in front of those street trailers, which is right next to the softball field and the teachers' parking lot. See if we can do something, if they put it in the back, or build some wooden petition. For years, I've been asking. And there's a walkway to go into the school there, so it is very unattractive. I agree with them also with the, there's some broken picnic tables. Someone has sent me some pictures of those, and, and a lot of those trailers to the right of the school, if I'm not mistaken, still have the old rotten wooden staircases and whatnot. I agree that we do, and everything is a cost factor, but I do agree that it's not pleasant looking, and somewhat minor. So it seems like we should be able to take care of that. So I appreciate him bringing that to our attention. I've got a couple of other things. I want to congratulate Eastern Almanz Community, as well as the staff. We, Pam and I had a chance to go into the field house, and, and I know I had some reservations about the field. about the field house, in the sense that they had come to the board asking for additional funding to complete the field house. And it, it was an issue about whether it would be paid for because of another situation that we had. And when I went out there, they showed the field house to us and told us that it is paid for in full, which is a remarkable task. And I just applaud the Meven community for assisting the school system in that endeavor and just creating a fabulous, I mean, it is absolutely outstanding field house facility there at Eastern High School, which we didn't have to pay a dime for, I guess, other than to move the trailers and monitoring. So I just wanted to thank them for that. And I also got on the coach about beating a sixty-something to zero in the first half. So I'm gonna take a knee the next time. I wanna talk about, and I might catch Mr. Alexander off-duty, but I'm still really upset about this, a phone call that I got in which a parent was really upset about a note from the doctor that said that her son should be on light duty. And my conversation with the coaching, with the area AD indicated that, and I don't know, he didn't mean it in a negative way, that when you get, and I'm saying this for the public, when you get a note from the doctor and the doctor says that your child was injured and should be on light duty, that it is the responsibility of the parent to have the doctor to specifically define what that means. Now, as a parent of a child who plays sports in school, I always thought that it was the responsibility of the coaching staff and for us to know, use some common sense and say, if I'm in a cast, I shouldn't have to define what light duty is. And I had said to the area director, athletic director, should we, as a sport, then have to define it? So I'm gonna publicly say, right now, that has not been concluded. I'm not happy with the outcome. I do not believe it's the parent's responsibility to tell the doctor what to write in the note. And if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. But in the meantime, until this is resolved, I would like for it to be, parents and the community to know that it is somebody's expectation in our school system that we have to define light duty for our students that are helping. You can comment on that later. And I'm not bronzing anybody. I just think that's absurd. And I agree with the parent. That is not our responsibility to do that. The next thing I wanna say is that, can we look at providing athletic trainers, professional trainers for, so that we won't have situations like that, where kids are hurt and parents are having to go in and say, okay, don't run. And like I told the AD, what am I gonna know about what y'all do? I don't know crunches and running up hills or whatever, so I gotta write that all out? No, it's ridiculous. We need to look to see if we can find state grants, if we can find monies, if we can find anything to get certified athletic trainers in our schools for all sports. It's, it's for the safety also of our children, and I think it's definitely needed. And any help that we can get in getting that done would be greatly appreciated. There's a couple of things I wanted to ask the superintendent to look. I want to, if you could please check and make notes that this board did not join the 501(c)(3) organization of the North Carolina School Board Association, that we not, we did not, in fact, send fees in for that this past year, that we are not a member, because I don't recall that coming back up to the board giving directions. We didn't, thank you. Another thing I found out here recently, which I'm quite disturbed about, and that is, I was told that the Board of Education paid a portion of the fine that Eastern Alamance High School Athletic Program, Football Program, had as a result of their being determined ineligible. And it was clearly stated to the superintendent that this board would not be responsible for any payment of that fine. I would like for you to check that and to verify if, in fact, that that took place without the approval of the board. And the last thing, of course, and I know everybody's prepared for me, and that is the BUDG Group. I have renamed them to the BUG, B-U-G, Group, as a result of going to eight schools and seeing bugs in the racks, or whatever they call it, the shiny stuff they put on the floors. I'm just gonna say, I, I'm, I'm just right. I am so disappointed, the number of phone calls, and I know all of y'all see my Facebook pages and the pictures that I've taken of our schools. And I'm not buying excuses about the previous company not being in the schools, because I'm, I'm not making excuses. I'm gonna sum this up by saying, what we went through with that previous group, we're not going through with this group. And if it, it means holding them accountable from day one. And that is not accepting any excuses for them. None. They knew when schools was gonna open. They knew how many people they had employed with them. They knew the size of the job that they were undertaking. And therefore, we made this board, made it very clear to them, that it was our expectation that we would not go through what we went through with the last company. I think that's the representative in the back there. And when I saw at those schools with the plural, I, two of the schools, I would not have sent my child into those schools. And there's no excuse. And then when I talk to your staff, and they try to belittle you and make you feel that they're the professionals, well, I got some floors in my house too. And I know I sweep my floors before I wax my floors. And I don't need to be an expert, okay? And when you move furniture and you see the dirt in the buildup, I shouldn't have to explain to your employees, to you or anyone else, that they needed to clean those floors better than that. It's unacceptable. If you didn't have the staffing to take on that job, you should not have. There are high expectations, and I for one, will not reduce my expectations at all. We cannot hold principals accountable, as we said this board would do, that a lot of the problems we had is because they were not communicating. Well, it's very unfair to hold them accountable when, in fact, it is your company who has not, in my opinion, fulfilled the obligations of your contract in a manner in which I feel is acceptable at this point. The teachers that have to go back last week and literally have to move desks and chairs in their classrooms to get it in order for our students today is totally unacceptable. The tone in which they speak with our teachers, or, no, our principals, teachers, whatnot, is unacceptable. Period. Now, I don't know if it was any better today, because I, I chose not to even go into the schools today. But I have received too many calls, too many complaints, and I have too many pictures. That's it. We're gonna stay on you. I know Dr. Thorpe is gonna stay on you, but remember this board member's face, 'cause I'm gonna be in the schools, and I am going to stay on your company to get it done. The last thing, I know some of your employees, that I thought one of the things that you told us was that one of the benefits, you was gonna pay between ten and twelve dollars an hour. And you're paying them eight dollars and twenty cents an hour. And many of them that I have spoken to said, we won't be around long because they only want us to work at night. That's four hours. I can go out and get a job at eight-twenty an hour and get eight dollars a day. You gotta, if that's in fact true, fix the problem. If you can't handle the contract, let us know early. I'm sure there's some provisions that you can get out of the contract. At this point, you're either get it done, get it done right, or let's get out early so we can move on to the next company. No excuses are accepted here. Thank you. That's all I gotta say.
Mark?
Well, my, my penchant for spontaneous oration is, is lost. I, I did want, just, just one quick salute to all of our teachers and staffs out there that, that serve our kids. Thank you for a great first opening day. I had thirty-one first days of school as a teacher. And unless you've been a teacher and done a first day of school, you have no idea what it's like to face down a group of kids who come back one whole summer's worth of energy and unloaded on you in six hours flat. And so, I know there are a lot of tired, weary employees out there tonight trying to recharge their batteries and get ready for day number two. And I know they will be ready. It's, it's a really exciting time of year, and I know the kids are just so, so fired up when they come through the door this, these, this, this first day. And let's hope we can keep it that way this entire school year. And I will second what Patsy just said, because I have many friends that are still teaching in, in the school system, and I've had several of them as well voice some concerns about issues with, with their classrooms. Something as simple as mopping a floor and then waxing it without stripping it. Basically, they're, they waxed over dirt. And it's just not a, I mean, it's just not a good thing. And I know several teachers that that's exactly what was in their classrooms when they came back for workdays. So I, I will second what Patsy said, maybe not quite as vociferously, but I'm right there, yes.
I just wanted to thank law enforcement in some of our high schools for the drill that we did last week. Dr. Alexander, and Dr. Benson, thank you for really getting on that. I've asked for that for a long time, and you guys made it happen.
Rolanda.
Yeah, Rolanda was awesome. And, but we, I talked to several law enforcement, and they said it really helped them in a tremendous way, because it's different in a school when nobody's there. And just when we were there, there weren't any kids there, so there was no sense of chaos. And I cannot stress how important it is for us to do something like that at each school, so each teacher knows the, the plan of her school, the, the pathway of her school, and just how to deal with her school and his school. So I just really wanna put that out there. And I'd also like to put something out there about restorative justice. I know I'm a huge fan about that. I would love to see this system wide. Lee Williams told me at Graham, before he left, that he was putting that in Graham Middle, and whoever that new principal is, I just pray that you have that same compassion for that, and that's part of the way you like to do with things, whoever that is. I cannot say enough about that. They're putting that in the court system in Wake County, and I am working for that here in this court system with juveniles. It is, it is enormously successful. Today, at this big room with all these board members, pension spike come up, and they are going to do a special class at the November conference, just for us people who don't have a clue what that is, but everybody panics when you mention it. So I encourage my board members to let's all take that, so we can all be up on that and exactly what we're fighting for, fighting against. And I keep saying this, and I'm, I'm gonna find that lamp with that genie in it. I cannot stress enough how we need those SROs at every elementary school, especially the ones that are out far. I mean, it's, time is everything. And I know, Dr. Benson, what you said, and I totally believe you, and I know you'll find it if it's under a rock somewhere, I'll help you find it. But like I mentioned about Impact Alamance, they are so good to us when it comes to the health of children and the well-being of children. That is part of that right there, and I just hope that we'll really consider, find a way to somehow do that and just be that system that's ready. And also, when we went into the Taj Mahal Athletic Building at Eastern, Coach Kirby was like a very proud parent. He was so proud of his front-end wash machine and his dryer. I loved the doors on the bathroom stalls. I mean, it was partitions between the, it was like, don't nobody come in here, just look at it. It was absolutely amazing. And I'm just so proud of the job they did because of the love and the, and just the community that went into that together. And I mentioned, I saw all of his laundry detergent, and he said, you know, we, we take donations and all that. And I said, you know, it's kinda like the, the buddy benches, you got the carpenter class to do that and deliver those buddy benches, to really make those little young faces and just be just superstars that day. I mentioned to Coach Kirby about having a drive for laundry detergent and things like that for Family Business Services, because they're shelter with multiple families living in there all the time. They go through paper towels, things like that, especially laundry detergent, all the time. And it would be a great thing, you know, for his boys to be able to take that to the Family Justice Center and present that to them. You cannot do enough of community service for young people to really get them grounded, to let us all know that the world is not about us, it's about, or me, it's about all of us, and we gotta make a difference. So it was just a joy to see that and just see a man so proud of that, and just, just the style and protocol and honor that goes with that. So they are the ultimate example of how to get it done. Thank you, Meven Community. You really showed us what you can do, and I'm just so proud of you.
I'll just briefly say, too, that I thought Friday's all-staff event went extremely well. I've heard extremely positive feedback from our teachers and those that were there. So thank you to all who helped coordinate that event and prepare it. I want the board to know that the Vote Three Committee is working hard to get that information out to the public. There's a lot, there's a website called alamancebonds.com, and you can take a look at it there. There's also a Facebook page, so I encourage you to take a look and see the information that they're sharing with our community. I think kudos goes to the front office staff and to Jenny and her team for stepping up. I hear last week was quite lively in the front hall, where people were registering their little people. So thank you to those, and Jenny's, Jenny and your team that stepped in to help, 'cause it is certainly challenging when we're opening a school year. So I heard good things about customer service on the front end, so thank you for that. I will stop there, and I will give the floor to Dr. Benson.
So we did have a really good day today.
Yay.
And, and getting emails is a, a part of that. But I just, I wanna thank our staff at the division level and at the school level into the classrooms, because they did what they needed to do. And some, some of it was at the eleventh hour, to make sure that we were as ready as we could possibly be for our young people today. And yes, we have work to do, and, and, and some of that work is in the area of our floors across, across schools, and we know that. And we're gonna be working with the BUDG Group to get some improvement, improvement there. But I just have to say that folks just really pitched in, right? And there were some challenges in terms of timelines to get folks into classroom spaces and ready to go. But I had the pleasure of, of visiting a number of schools today with Dr. Manus, and our folks did a great job. They were, they were ready to go. The kids were right back in it, like they had not missed, you know, missed a day, which is incredible. We got folks there in a timely manner this morning. And what's more challenging on the first day of school is making sure you get everybody home, because they don't always go home the way that they got there in the, in the, in the morning. And I just, you know, I heard teams strategizing about how they were gonna make sure, then they knew where every young person was gonna be, what, what bus or what car, whatever that was gonna look like, and getting everybody home in a safe, timely, safe, timely manner. So, you know, schools are just not the same during the summer when our teachers and our, our students are not in them. And it's just, the place comes alive, I think, when, when we make that transition. We're fortunate, we've got some year-round schools. We get to experience a little bit of that throughout the course of the year. But to have everybody back in our traditional schedule schools is really special and exciting. And, yeah, we do have a really strong sense of community. I think that played out with all of the speakers on, on, on Friday. And I'm, I'm confident we're gonna continue to do great things in this coming year and beyond. So I just wanna thank everybody for everything they did to have a great opening day today for our traditional calendar schools.
Thank you. Okay, Brian, you have a motion for us?
Make a motion. We had a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318 dot 11a3 to preserve attorney-client privilege, North Carolina General Statute 143, 318 dot 11a6 to consider confidential personnel information protected under North Carolina General Statute 115c dash 319, 115c dash 321.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great. At this time, we are moving to closed session. We're back in open session, Ms. Madron?
Yes, ma'am. Chair Gant, members of the board, Dr. Benson, I present to you the Personnel Report dated August 27, 2018, and staff requests your approval at this time.
Is there a motion on the floor to accept the Personnel Report as presented?
Some move.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great. Thank you, Ms. Madron. Any further business to come before the board? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Tony. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.